All right, let's get this meeting going. I want to turn to Adam if you want to lead the pledge of allegiance.
Absolutely.
This is a time where we pledge the flag. It's voluntary, so do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. This is the planning board now. Seven oh six is a start. Call a meeting to order. Let's go around the room and introduce yourselves. We'll start with Skip.
Skip Severance, alternate.
Danny Arsenal, planning board member.
John Decker, BOS rep.
Dirk Rotenheis, chairman.
Chris Evans, secretary.
Glenn Griswold, member.
Adam Ryan, planning board member.
Larry Haney, SRPC.
I'd like to see Skip Severance for Drew, who's a member who's out, so you're a full voting member.
Okay.
We have the initial move to approve minutes from 5:28, 2025. I read through these earlier, and again, I didn't have any further comments.
You want comments now?
Sure.
Line 22, I don't know what that is. Did we take agenda items out of order?
Yes, we did.
We did.
We did? Oh, okay.
Yeah, the original agenda had the presentation from Land Reaver First, but they were running a little bit late, so we moved some other agenda items up.
Okay.
Any other comments on the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes?
I will make the motion to approve the minutes of the May 28th, 2025 planning board minutes.
Motion in a second?
A second.
Motion in a second. Those in favor, indicate aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll abstain because I was absent.
I'll abstain because I was absent as well.
Okay. I guess we are a little bit different this time. I think maybe I requested it of having the updates prior to the public hearings. I thought because we would get through the 6:30 timeframe, the public hearings would be about seven.
Well, we could probably take stuff out of order if you want.
We should probably take that out of order.
So do you need a motion to take stuff out of order?
If you don't, because I'm the chairman, I can just move it, right?
Sure, I would agree with that.
All right, so let's move the public hearings up to now, which was just after the approval of minutes. And that public, so I'll call that case 25-008 SUB, 70-25 LLC, Channel Lane. It's an application from Franklin Vieira and Associates on behalf of 7025 LLC requesting a two-lot conventional subdivision. The property is located on Channel Street in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map 70 lot 25.
Channel Lane.
It says Channel Lane, but it was Channel Street now.
Yeah, it's a typo. It's probably Channel Street.
Lane Town's better.
Okay, Jack, thank you.
It's not a street.
You've got to take that up with the 911 people.
Yeah, I don't know how they got them.
The only street in Nottingham? I did gross. So let me just turn to our SRPC here. Was there a review of the application materials?
Yes, I sent a memo on Friday. I'm trying to change all my file names real quick. Channel Street, not Lane. So, you know, as noted in the summary, the applicant has frontage on a class five road. And meets minimum area, so these are frontage lots. The size does not require any additional permitting from the state or anything like that, though I did accidentally leave it checked in the conditions of approval section, so ignore that. But it's not checked in the upper part about other permits and approvals. It just notes the waivers. Oh, so, right, we've got to do the... The application does appear to be complete, and the board can accept it. So we can start there, and then I can, you know, give some commentary if you want after that.
I've got just probably one major question is, can we accept this application as complete, given the approval that was just provided by the Board of Selectmen? And I say that because there's an appeal period.
There is, and I had planned to mention that. I didn't have it in my report was that if you do go forward with an approval tonight, it should be conditioned on an outcome from the Board of Select, from the Select Board. As far as accepting it, that's above my pay grade. I don't know the nuances of a road layout acceptance. I've never seen one before, so I don't know if...
I don't think it needs to be that. I think it needs to be procedural, right? Whether we can accept an application that has a pending approval from the Board of Selectmen.
I agree with you. I don't know if that's, if that, is that, if that's possible.
If I may, I believe that we can accept the application as complete, but I don't think that we can move forward on an approval of the project until that's settled.
Well, if that's the case, then you might have it in front of you for a longer period of time, and you have to act.
Yeah, we have, we have a period that we have to take action on. So once, and that clock starts ticking once we accept it.
Right.
So that's, that's the condition.
How long is that approval process? I don't even know. I mean, not the...
Sixty-five days.
Not approval, the appeal, the appeal process.
Thirty days usually.
Thirty days. Fifteen or thirty, it's usually one or the other. I don't know. We should have asked Ellen before she left.
Yeah, I know. I'm sure gone.
So...
Well, I, and I'm not saying at all, we don't accept it if it's acceptable. I don't want, we can't push that just because, you know, we want to. I just want to know if there's a...
But if it gets appealed, then that would go well beyond your sixty-five days. If someone takes an appeal and brings it back for the ZBA, you're not going to see it for a couple of months at least, so...
Yeah, but that takes the action out of our hands. So if we accept the application now...
Okay. If you accept it now, the start, the clock starts.
Yes.
Right.
But we wouldn't, it would be, we wouldn't have to act in that sixty-five days if there was already an appeal that actually happened for the approval, I think.
I think we would still need to either extend, approve or deny, or take some action within that sixty-five day period in most cases.
The only action you can unilaterally take is to deny.
Yeah.
Pardon me? The only action you could unilaterally take is to deny. Everything else would have to be agreed upon by the applicant.
Yes.
And I'm not trying to say that he wouldn't be appealing, but you don't, you don't know, you can't anticipate or assume their actions.
No, but I'm just saying, we do, we, these are the things we can do at that sixty-five day. If it's not ready and prepared, we can vote to approve, deny, or ask for an extension. And certainly it would be Kevin's interest to be, you know, extend this if it was under appeals. We have all kinds of extensions out there on all of our, everything.
But he doesn't have to agree to it, and if it doesn't get extended, then it...
No. Well, I guess then we would, then we would be forced to deny.
Yes.
Right, so it would make more sense for Kevin to ask for an extension.
Yep.
If, if that so occurred.
And let me just go back to the application. The waivers were submitted? The necessary waivers?
Yes.
Okay.
As part of their application. So the applicant submitted an application and a plan. There were comments made. Jason and I had talked, and then they revised the checklist and the plan and resubmitted.
Do we have new plans in our packages?
You would have the most updated plan.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the new plans are...
Mailed.
Mailed.
The ones that came the other day? The ones that came the other day?
I don't think I got...
If you look at the bottom right, it would, of the, of the plan, it'll say 64.
Yep. I think it came Saturday for me.
Can I just look at it real quick?
Sure.
We do have a copy here if anyone didn't have one.
What's in this, today's package?
I just wanted to take a quick look at these. Just want to make sure that we have the, the most recent plans.
So the...
So given that...
The original plans were dated 4/14/2025. So if you look in the lower right, there's a title lock. Just make sure you're looking at the 64 plans.
Right.
June 4th.
Okay, well, the...
And so the application did include a request for waivers. So we do have that. I did note it in my staff report. Wetland delineation and soils.
Should we be waiving a, oh, that's a topography, okay.
There was a waiver, I think, for some line. So I think the potential question here is, are we accepting this application or not? And one of the concerns I have is, I haven't even gotten the plan yet to look at. Not, not to say, you know, it's dated June 4th, and we usually ask for seven days in advance to review things, which some of us haven't gotten. So, you know, we should either think about whether we're accepting this or the, all the parties are here, or we want to continue this so we have adequate opportunity to look this over.
I think that you're putting the cart before the horse a little bit. What we're looking at right at the moment is whether or not it's administratively complete. And that's it. You know, once, once we find that it is administratively complete and we accept it, then we can start looking at, okay, what are some of the aspects of this that we want to discuss?
Exactly. All the pieces that are required by our checklist and all that are here. That's checked by SRPC. Alana has all of the updated copies. So, yeah, it is just a matter of accepting the application, so we then can start reviewing it in that process.
Such being, I'll make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Motion in a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Those in favor of accepting the application, indicate aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it, so the application is now accepted. We'll now review the application. Is there anything, Blair, is there anything further to mention about it at this point before we ask the applicant to provide us a...
Yeah, I mean, in our... The first request for waiver is for a full wetland delineation. They do show wetland delineation that is in the area of where they might put a house or where the existing logging roads slash future driveway would be. I think that's in line with what the board has done in the past. So it would be an acceptable waiver. I'd want to get a little clarification with what he was looking for, for the soil information due to plant-sized lots, because typically we do request the test pit data for the 4K area, just to have it on, in the file. But that could be a condition of approval, just to submit after the fact. The only other thing I would want to hear from the applicant is that as part of the monumentation, that the new, the proposed lot line that would separate the two lots is 835 feet long and typically require monumentation of a 300 feet. So just to ask the applicant about doing that, and that might be a condition as well. Other than that, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward application. One of the big differences between the April submission and the June submission is that they added the 30K area. That's a zoning requirement. It's not a waivable subdivision regulation requirement, so it does need to be on there despite this, you know, the gargantuan size of the lots, but it does need to be shown on there. And they put it on there. And it shows the test pits falling inside of it and two, two test pit holes, or the 4K area inside of it with two test pit holes. So everything there is meeting zoning, as far as I can tell. You know, with those couple of things that I noted in my, in my staff comments at the bottom. Oh, and then, you know, just one other condition again is how you want to, if you approve tonight, how you want to condition it with regards to the Select Board's decision.
Okay. And then at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come up and explain the, the application that's before us.
Kevin Bassett, 101 Short Drive, owner of roof, LLC 7025.
And Jason Franklin, survey project manager, Franklin Vieira Associates. Let's start with the waiver for the soils. It was just for the soil mapping. I do have, I did bring a copy of the test pit data. I can certainly forward that to the board members if you guys want to take a look at it. It was just for the soil mapping. It wasn't to have...
Oh, like, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct. Like to show the different types along the lots, yeah. It wasn't for the test pit data. I did bring a copy of the test pits. They are all passable. If you guys want, I said, if you want a copy, I would be more than happy to email a copy of the test pits.
Yeah, if you could just send it to Alana so we can have her files.
Okay. All right. Yeah. And as far as the other comments, we can absolutely, we will absolutely put monumentation every 300 feet on that line. And we'll, you know, probably throw, we'll have one at each corner, and then maybe we'll kind of split the difference in between. So we'll have a total of four monuments, one at each corner and two in the middle somewhere. Yep. And as far as the wetlands, we did have Jack Hayes. He went out and he delineated the wetlands that would have impact to the development. We didn't really think it was prudent to have the entirety of the lot to be delineated. Kevin and, you know, his son and daughter both have basically picked out the areas where they want to have their houses in the future. And I think it was just, you know, extra costs associated to have all of the lots, the entirety of it delineated. So we do show, like I said, it's a, it's a poorly drained wetland. It's not very poorly drained. There's a little bit of seasonal runoff in there, pockets, but straight, you know, nothing overly exciting, actually. Pretty boring. And we do meet all the setback requirements. Other than that, if you guys have any other questions, it seems to be, it's a fairly straightforward. So we don't need state subdivision approval. We're looking at 12.6 acres, 18 acres, more than, more than enough land to develop this. Other than that, I think we kind of, most of the board's familiar that we had an informational a few weeks ago, a month ago, maybe, or so. Be more than happy to answer any questions. Uh-oh.
No mercy. Must be a buddy of yours.
Yeah, I think the board is, well, at least myself, will have probably more questions about the road and the road scenario with the Board of Selectmen. And how that's going to move forward. We understand that there's, you know, a 25-foot now width to...
Easement.
However that becomes.
Easement.
I heard easement, I heard right-of-way, and I heard travelway. So I don't know which one of these ended up in the...
It was passes and easement.
Easement.
Yeah. With the road in, in places that are...
With the road and variable with, in that easement.
And it always was variable and, and before the town come in and, and did remove stumps and rocks and things, you know, it was, it was far narrower than 25 feet. So now it's close to 25 feet, most of Channel Street. So it's looking pretty good from my perspective.
Mr. Franklin, did you observe in the 30K area the steep slopes? Or is that noted or removed from there, or...
I did not notice any, I mean, I went and did the test pits. There are not steep slopes there at all. It's a little, just a little bit of relief there, but you're not talking, I mean, 10%, maybe at best. There was a hill going from the road up the old logging road into that area. That's a little steep, but the area with the 30,000, where the 30K area and the 4K area are, it's barely level. I mean, there's a little bit of undulation in there, but it's not steep.
So based on my scaling, it looked like there were a couple of areas that were about 12% as, you know, going from where you have the 4K area heading down towards the wet.
Yes, yeah.
That area kind of drops off.
I, yeah, maybe 10, maybe 10 or 12%. I did not do a slope analysis.
On a, it, these look like tighter contour lines because of the size of the lot.
Right. And I don't, I don't see the, I don't have the plan, so I'm asking if this was...
If you were a two-acre...
I mean, I can, if you want, we can bring up there. I said, we use LiDAR topography. Again, you know, to do on-the-ground topo or to fly it, again, it's at an expense for something in that area. When Kevin goes to develop this, he will need a state of proof set of design. We will do on-the-ground topo for that. We do not use LiDAR or NOAA LiDAR for development purposes. It will be done on the ground. I've already been in talks with Scott to be doing that for his house, and we'll be doing a topo for Kevin's daughter as well. So the LiDAR was just, you know, basically, it's a requirement, so we downloaded it. Seems fairly accurate. Again, without going out and comparing, giving ground shots, I don't know the exact accuracy of it.
It's, last, in the spring, our, the town voted on the steep slope ordinance, which was pointed out that, you know, we want this 30K area to be exempt of this steep slopes.
25%?
Yeah, 25%. So I was not able to discern that if there's an area like that.
That's only for major subdivision.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions of the applicants before we open a public hearing? Okay. I'd like to open a public hearing. Anyone in the public would like to speak to this application? Anyone in the public want to speak against the application? Third time anyone in the public would like to speak for this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for further discussion. I think that we also want to, we should consider, you know, what is the other developable property in here? Future planning, if this is subdivided again, does this allow, does the 25-foot allow enough space for, you know, future, what, I'm not sure even if it's on this property or adjacent property, a connection that really would warrant even a wider area?
Can I see the topographic sheet? Nope, nope, nope. Two of these and two of those. Okay, you got it.
Another way to protect future for development is requesting easements along the property line for the widths necessary. We don't, as it was pointed out, planning board does not have jurisdiction to set the right-of-ways.
Right.
We can request easements if there's additional places that might need it for maintenance or further expansion, if this is ever, you know, re-subdivided, given that these are, these are large lots. And I'm sure in the applicant's generation and maybe two generations, it's not likely they would be re-subdivided, but they could be. So that could add some more density to this area. I just want to make sure we're looking at that in a planning sense, to make sure that if it's a maximum subdivision that is allowable by our regulations currently, is this adequate? Is the roadway width adequate? Would there be a tipping point where it would become a subdivision road? We should be considering all of that. In no way, in my opinion, that, I mean, I'm certain this road has been serving this area for a long time. It probably does not need to be wider for now, but in 10, 20, 30 years, it might be. It might necessitate that width. And at that point, you know, maybe there's a future subdivision plan that could require it. I just want to see if there's an opportunity here to... If there's critical areas, we can request it to be wider, just in an easement form. I'm not sure how we'd even go about that. I think we'd have to, we have to consider that and take a look at that. I think that's what I would recommend, is that we look at the potential build-out of the property.
It would seem like it would only be a 25-foot, maximum of 25 foot from the center of the established way on the side that's being subdivided.
Correct. State that again, Skip.
It would appear that the, the easement, the capability for the easement would be a maximum of 25 feet from the center of the established roadway, whatever it is where the way that was on the layout plan, and according to this.
You mean, if it was, if it was to be 50 in the future?
Well, he's only subdividing one side of the road.
Right.
Yes.
Right, he's only subdividing this.
Subdivision is only on one side of the road. So by, as I understand it, that would only be 25 feet on this side, on the side of the road that the subdivision is happening on.
My understanding...
It would be nice to do it on the other side also, because he also owns the land. But he's here for two-lot subdivision, not for the other lots that get subdivided as a result of the roads.
So...
Right?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I guess maybe that's a question for the applicant, or maybe someone on the board can let me know that... So there's, how many parcels are here?
In total, for like, I mean, prior to this subdivision, or...
Yeah, prior to the subdivision. So subdivision's not approved yet. Five separate lots as it is...
Existing currently, five separate lots that are subdivided when the town accepted the roads.
And so those five lots will now become six lots.
Correct, once, if this subdivision goes through, that will become...
So it's one lot that's going into two lots.
Correct.
All right, now I understand. It's, it's not a separate lot across the street.
Correct.
All right.
No, that's pre-existing.
All right, pre-existing. Thank you for the clarification, but then I get your point, yeah. If, if there was an easement, then, yeah, it would be on one side of the road.
So seemingly, um, when the discussion previously dealt with the width of the red, of what this rightaway could be. We're kind of at 33 feet.
Well, with, with...
Not, not that that matters, I'm just saying, that, that was a thought process that, uh, two rod road would be 33 feet and so forth and so on, so.
Yeah, and, and so that's what typically would happen, is you would take it from one side of the road, and then when the other sub gets subdivided, you would take it from the other side of the road. Then you have a 50-foot rightaway, that if they're going to subdivide it further, then that's what allows a wider road to be built if needed.
And what, and what Kevin has done is establish where the road is.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it is or not, he's established something that we can measure from halfway.
Yep, yep, I get that. Yeah, and I'm, my point is, you know, that the Board of Selectmen were indicating, were, you know, whether a larger rightaway or easement is needed, um, for, to define this, this road. But the planning board should look at it as in if there's further subdivision possible, and it may not be, it might be that it could be six other lots, right? And if six plus lots mean, you know, that it needs to go from a 25-foot path to a 50-foot, you know, probably not, you know? It, I'm sure it would adequately serve that. But if there are constraints along this roadway, although it didn't say any much in drainage, but if the road was to get smoothed out at all, any point, then that could be done through an easement, through this easement.
The next thing that I find somewhat concerning was basically what I talked about at the last, last meeting, previous meeting. Something like a school bus turnaround or a school bus path or something to that effect. We haven't discussed this at all, but, um, these roads are now that capable. I think postal service can probably get around okay, but I, I know there's a school bus that goes there and there's a lot of people that collect their kids at the end of the...
At the beginning of the road.
Oh, the Amherst.
Beginning, end.
End.
The beginning.
156.
At one, right, at the intersection of 156 and Dolph Amherst.
And, so I don't know how many kids are there, but I mean, it, it seems like there's a lot, and we should have some concern over that, although it doesn't seem to be in our regulations anywhere.
Well, there is on subdivision regs, Article 15, Road and Driveway Design Construction Standards, but that, that, I don't know if that applies only to new roads, and it does say, "Rightaway shall be 50 feet in width, except when topography or physical conditions make additional development in the future unlikely, in which case the minimum rightaway shall be 36 feet." So, um, again, this, this is an existing road, so it's, it's a giant conundrum, um, here, and, um, I, we're, I don't even know what to make of this selectment and this, this meeting here, but on the road, because it, it's, the lake roads, they're, they're all variable and it's kind of a mess.
Uh, is there other concerns of the board?
I have one. The existing woods roads, um, I'm noticing on 70.55 that, that appears to be fairly steep going up to the accessory building, and I'm just, I just want to make sure that, that grade is sufficient, that, um, fire, truck, ambulance, whatnot can get up there.
The only thing I can speak to that is he applied for a building permit and got it. I mean, I, I mean, he could have gone in there, it's an existing road, um, I think for, I mean, it's not like we're constructing the driveway, it's in existence. I don't know when the road was constructed. Kevin stated it was, um, for logging purposes, and it was there prior to his purchase of the land. They're using it now. It's there, I don't know if it's being used.
Should, what do you think about a site walk?
Well, reason I'm asking is because, yeah, you know, it's in our regulations that, um, driveways can only be a specific grade, like, or up to a specific grade, um, to be able to allow for fire and ambulance and whatnot, so.
Yeah, I'd have to look and see if that's existing, or if it's for brand-new driveways.
Well, this would be a brand-new driveway.
This is going to be a brand-new driveway. At the moment, it's a logging road.
Right.
But Kevin's using it for, I mean, that accessory building is more like a, it's a concrete-based Quonset hut, he's storing, he's driving up there, he's storing cars in it now. If it was an issue, I think it should have been addressed at the time he got the building permit.
Yeah, I, I do think that, I think it would be prudent for the planning board to, um, provide the subdivision plans to, um, fire, police, and highway, just to make sure the driveways are in the right place, make sure that, um, as, you know, the driveway slopes or anything that they want to look at, that they feel is accessible. So I, I think that that would be prudent for the planning board to request that of those, the town agencies to review this.
Can we also send the plan to the superintendent of schools? We look at by the bus company and maybe to the post office? We don't normally do this.
I was going to say, I don't remember doing that.
No, we, because we never voted roads in realistically that weren't created by something other than a petition.
Yeah, well, you know, part of that is that those, the school and the federal agency is going to be relying on the town that they've accepted and these roads are passable.
Right.
Correct.
So I, I don't know, getting feedback from them is...
It's kind of a done deal.
We're going to know if it's, if it's, at least somewhat acceptable.
I, I think that based on the board of selectmen's actions tonight, that it's moved...
Right, it's a done deal unless it gets appealed.
Exactly.
And you guys have already sent two, fire and police to talk about and...
Apparently it was done at some point, but, you know, it was agreed upon previously to me being on that board about the 25 feet, so.
So the selectmen were okay with a school bus going down that road? I mean, I don't think they knew anything about it before this, but...
The emergency services looked at it, correct?
That, that's my understanding, emergency services looked at it, so...
If they looked at it, they must have given the roads determined.
The school bus doesn't go down there now, so it probably never crossed their mind.
Correct. That's my guess.
So my point is, is that they haven't seen it with two driveways and two new houses. They've seen, they, they've looked at it for the roadway.
Right, but that's...
Whether they can get A to B, but now there's going to be two other homes, can they serve those homes? So that's why I think, I'm saying, I think we should have our, the fire department, um, review that.
Mr. Chair, can I ask?
Yes.
Alana, do you know if fire department and highway has reviewed it?
I don't think I did, because I saw that, that had already, that they, I've seen it, but I can't.
Yeah, I think we, we would want to do that.
That's acceptable by me, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
So the town not having to be responsible for giving the documentation to the fire department and that sort of thing for the plans?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that comes out of the 35 copies that you send us. Yeah, and it, the other things are...
Do we need to approve a site walk, Mr. Chair?
Um, I can, I can request if anyone wants to do a site walk. If it, if anyone would like to do...
It is gated and locked, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, well, we would have to have it as a, um, a noticed meeting, so it would have to be publicly notified if we do a site walk, if I'm still remembering, right? Okay.
Council's a public meeting.
Yeah, the council's a public meeting, so...
So wouldn't the notification here, the public meeting, be sufficient for the, right, I mean, if we determine a site walk would be needed, would be contained?
Yes, yes, right, right. Yeah. Just asking you.
I wasn't asking about this, would, want to do a site walk, that's fine. What I was asking about is for the highway department to come up and look at grade and, and emerg, you know, and fire and all of those folks.
Oh, oh, okay.
If they are, I assume they're different, they might not be...
Yeah, they, they may not be available at a public site walk visit, right.
They would do their own scheduling or drive-by or something, or coordination of that is on them.
Hopefully that's all you would ask, is for them to come up, tell you the grade's okay.
Yeah, that's it.
And I'm positive it will be, so.
Do we want to take a quick straw poll on doing a site walk?
I'd certainly be willing to go take one, I think it's part of our due diligence.
Not opposed to that either.
Okay, why don't we...
Let's, let's set up a site walk.
Why don't we do that? Just schedule a site walk, um...
So we need some time to post it.
Right.
Which would be the 15 day or?
No, I believe just 24 hours.
Yeah, it's a sharp one.
It's a meeting, it's not a hearing, so you only need 24 hours.
Oh, cool.
So as long as it's not tomorrow.
No, right. But Saturday's okay.
It's going to rain. Every weekend from now on is going to rain.
I know, rains every weekend.
We can go during the week, I, I'm going to be on vacation for a week, so, starting tomorrow night, so, um...
So tomorrow's out for you. Tomorrow, we can't do it.
Tomorrow's good for me. Not to be there, that is, yeah. One, um...
Let's try and find a day next week. You said you're out?
Um, 12th to 20th, so it would be the following week if, if we want to try to, Monday, Tuesday, 23rd, 24th. It's probably going to work hours.
I can always look at a different time.
We could accommodate you, Chris, if you wanted to come up single.
I, I would be happy, yeah, I drove up there today and I, I noted your, you know, things there, just, just, I, I haven't seen the plan, I didn't get the plan, so I'm kind of at, at odds to say what it looks like in the woods back there, so that's, that's all.
I did email everybody last Wednesday with attached plans, and they're also always posted on the town website.
Yes, yes.
So if you don't get a plan...
It's our responsibility, she's done her job, and sent it, sent it out to everybody. It's in the envelope that I didn't open.
I would think you would.
I'd say, Chris, go sit in front of her.
Okay, I got it. Gavel.
I'm going to get you a dunce cap.
Who are you looking at?
Calendars.
So, um, we have a meeting in two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
So let's do it before then.
Yep.
Does the 18th work?
That's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday.
That's next Wednesday? Yeah, that works for me.
Yeah.
Is there a time? It's light on, it's, the lights are on after 5:00, so...
Same time as our regular meetings, 6:30?
6:30.
6:30, yeah.
Okay.
I could do 6:30 on...
6:30 on the 18th?
At the gate?
At the gate's mark.
At the gate?
What gate?
Kevin's locked gate.
The gate on the first driveway in.
Okay.
On, on the, the first.
All right.
And you're okay if I visit at another time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So then we'll, uh, we'll get...
No one will shoot at me.
Make sure we have, uh, our town services, and then we'll do the site walk. And, um, you know, we'll, we'll read the formal, uh, town board of selectmen vote. We'll have, that'll be formalized in writing by then, so we'll have that.
I expect so.
Do you, do you want to do something with the buses, or?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's, um, I mean, they're private entities, private services, so...
Well, it happens to you, yeah.
We have to work with our own town agencies.
I mean...
I don't, I don't know if they said, if they asked for something when they came back, like, if we send them something and they have a comment about, they need this curve to be, you know, changed.
Yeah.
What, what would we do?
Right, I mean, the problem exists right now because they are public roads right now, so if...
But they haven't started using them yet, so I'm guessing they don't know yet.
Right.
But when they know, and it's winter time, I think there's going to be an issue.
But I think that we did what we could in stating to the board of selectmen our concerns, and the fact that they chose not to, uh, listen to them is, is what it is.
I guess I understand, but...
Do we want to...
You can turn around and...
So at this point, we'd, we'd want to continue the meeting.
Go all the way around the lamprey.
So I'd look for a motion to continue this application to the 20, meeting on the 24th? To the site walk?
It would be the 25th, I think.
Well, this, no, the site walk would be different. So we would continue this meeting. What's the date of the next meeting?
25th.
The 20...
Two weeks from today.
25th, yeah.
Okay. So the 25th, at 6:30.
Do we want to look at the, talk about the wetland delineation, or just save that after we do the site walk and all?
Just save that for after.
Okay, check.
Then you'll have time to review your plans that you got.
Right, perfect, all right. We'll make a motion to, um, continuance to the 25th of this, of June at 6:30 here at the, um, planning board meeting office, and, um, that's it for this application.
And I will second.
Okay, motion is second. Those who pay are going to get aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? Have that continued until that meeting, and then the site walk will be on the 18th.
And you're sending test pits?
I will email them to Alana tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
I'm not doing very good, because this is the second meeting in a row that a lot of order.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, let's go back to the, uh, agenda item four, so select board, committee, staff, board meeting, updated members, anything, I'll turn to our select board here if there's anything besides roads to talk about.
Right, so obviously we just had the hearing on the road itself. But our last meeting, we had a hearing on the park, the first hearing on the parking ordinance, um, and then we will have our second meeting on that next Monday. We did have the hearing to accept the $25,000 PREPA grant, which I'm sure you guys are all familiar with. And also the PLIA is having their annual meeting this Saturday, and their guest speaker will be discussing the statuses of the dams. He's from the dam bureau. So if you're interested in the dams, you may want to go to that, that will be at the state park at 9:30.
Both dams?
Both, I believe both dams are being addressed or talked about. It's, and what other questions you have, I'm sure he'll do his best.
One did have a leak, they did some sort of patchwork, but they're kind of monitoring that to see if they need to do more with that, is my understanding. The PLA, I, PLIA meeting is at the state park, and you could, um, go past the gates and go in there for free, and they're usually very informative and well-attended, um, so it's, it's a, it's a great meeting, great, great spot.
Any else?
Uh, that's the...
What is the parking thing about, which...
The parking ordinance? The parking ordinance, uh, it's basically, um, we're talking about the parking fines and stuff, especially specific to, like, the town beach, things like that.
How do you figure that's gonna go?
How do I figure it's gonna go?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. You know, I can't figure anything.
There seem to be discussions in regards to determine.
The amount.
The amount. I, I don't know.
So, if you have an opinion and want to speak at the hearing, we're welcome to hear your comments.
Proportionate that part.
So I'll go around the room and just, if you have an update, Skip?
Anything?
Um. I don't know where it came from, but the ADU thing came up, the state has approved that, or whatever, and I thought it was worded very strangely. I thought the word, uh, required was used, and I can't find what that, and that, that, I don't think that sounds right, I don't know what we do about it, but it sounds like an ADU is required on every lot.
No. No, I didn't read it that way, I think the requirement.
Yeah, I, well, it's a requirement.
Usually, it doesn't require the towns to do something. It provides the legis- the applicable aspects that are required in order to have a ADU, but the one, the latest one that I've got didn't have as many changes in it as this one does. And this is the twenty-twenty-four session, had a lot of changes to it. The other one, it just seemed to go to the end and say, I read it as every lot was required to have one, it was like, that's insane.
No, the only things that I'm aware of is that the state now allows detached, um, doesn't have to be attached to the primary. It doesn't have to be owner occupied, um, and you increase the square footage to nine hundred and something versus seven fifty.
Yes.
Nine fifty?
Nine fifty, uh, yeah, they can't, yeah, nine fifty and no less than seven fifty, they can't restrict it. The not, not the resident part, though, that's the concerning part, they don't have to be a family member or an actual.
Yeah, is that in there?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I thought so.
So, the required piece is that the town is required to allow detached. This town currently does not.
Yeah.
So you will have to change your zoning. It's not, it's not requiring people to put a, uh, uh, an ADU.
It's required.
It's requiring the town to allow it, whereas before, the enabling regulations required you to allow a, an attached ADU, but gave you the option to allow detached, which is what this community did. Now, you have to allow, you are required to allow one detached.
Okay, I guess I'm saying the same thing. To me, that's directing the town to do something very specific.
Yes.
Which is typically not the case.
Well, that's what the original ADU legislation did.
Allowed?
No, it said you had to.
Had to what?
Had to allow it. You had to allow attached ADUs.
But we didn't ha- we did not have to allow detached.
Correct.
So now we have to allow both attached and detached.
And.
And per non-family.
And.
What the whole thing says.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
That being said, it does say, a municipality may require owner occupancy of one of the dwelling units, but it shall not specify which unit the owner must occupy. And, a municipality may require that the owner demonstrates that one of the units is his or her principal place of residence, and the municipality may establish reasonable regulations to enforce, to enforce such a requirement.
Which they can't do.
Well, right now, it's currently in place.
Would it have to live here for twenty-five years?
No, 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 it says reasonable, so same as, you know, where are you voting? You know? I mean, it's currently, it's currently the status right now, one of the units has to be occupied, I always assumed it was either one, but I guess this is saying, is kind of clarifying now, that it can be either one.
Yeah, and, I mean, that makes, I, I assumed, I assumed it was either one also.
If it doesn't require it, then why have ADUs, just make everything two family, or two units?
Right.
It would be pointless, but.
Well, in this case, it sounds like it would be three family.
No.
With the atta- with the detached.
No, what it's saying is it either or, are you messing with me?
It's that alternative comedy over there.
From our old member.
Alright, so, we have to change the zoning thing, or?
Yes, but you don't have to hurry up, you don't have to do it in a specialist, uh, special town meeting, you can do it at a regular town meeting, it's just that.
It's just a clarification based on, the law says we have to do this anyway, so.
Somebody goes into our zoning department, or can they just put in the detached ADU?
It takes effect July first, two thousand twenty-five, so, as of that point, people can come to the town and say, I want to make a detached ADU, and the building inspector presumably would say, holy crap, I didn't know we could allow this in our zoning ordinance, and they'd have to defer to the state law, which takes precedence, because all zoning powers come from the state.
So that means it doesn't matter how much space they have, or frontage, or anything, then, they can have a separate living, oh, it does?
I mean, that's the same as all ADUs. Yeah, um, so it says that, "One accessory dwelling unit shall be allowed without additional requirements for hot-size frontage, space limitations, or other controls beyond what would be required for a single-family dwelling without an accessory dwelling unit." So they still have to follow all of the zoning, but they can put an ADU on it, and it says, "The municipality is not required to allow more than one ADU for a single-family dwelling, and the municipality may prohibit accessory dwelling units associated with multiple si- single-family dwellings attached to each other, such as townhouses."
Yeah.
So, going to your point about the three families, no. It's single-family ADU, or duplex, or something of that nature, but if you have a duplex, can't put an ADU. That's, that's the way that I'm reading that.
That's what, and that's what I just heard, so, I agree.
And you do need to meet, um.
All of the.
Septic requirements for capacity, um, for that, so if you have an unusually small lot, and you can't get a capacity for, you know, a, you know, if you have a four-bedroom home and you want to put an ADU, which equates to a one-and-a-half-bedroom septic, and you don't, can't put a five, six-bedroom septic there, then you would not be allowed to do this.
So if you had a house, and you put in, put on a detached ADU, according to state law, you wouldn't be able to add an ADU to the house itself?
Correct.
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 But this does allow somebody, if they wanted to, for example, put an ADU above their garage, they could do that without having it attached to the main dwelling, as long as the septic and zoning and all the rest of that is made. Yeah.
So, one ADU is allowed?
Correct.
Per lot?
Yes.
And now detached, and some size requirements that are probably different than some of the zoning rules that, so we'll have to update.
Yeah, as far as tot- it doesn't change the total number of units, per lot.
That's the way I've agreed with, was.
Understood, yeah.
This would.
You just don't have to look at your in-laws anymore, you can send them all back.
This could be a lot of.
You can put them in the back forty.
There's a glasses half-full kind of guy, like.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Danny, you have anything else?
I was wondering about this letter, um, I don't know if it was read at the select board meeting, about the road with.
No, we didn't actually read it.
It was not.
And this is not a comment about the content of the letter, at all, so just ignore that, I was just wondering, sincerely Nottingham Planning Board, how does that get there?
So, yeah, I can explain it.
Okay.
There was a movement that no one wanted to really know about, no. It was a covert operation. Glenn, after one of the meetings, um, Glenn was thinking, hey, you know, maybe it should be wider, maybe we should talk about that, um, started circulating a draft.
Or did see it on the email?
Yeah, he sent a draft, and I think I commented on it, Skip commented on it, and the intent, if we had more time, was to have it as a letter coming from the board.
Yeah.
There wasn't that time, so it was a draft.
Okay.
Letter that went to the select board, I'm not sure the avenue it went in, but I wasn't quite sure it was going to go to them.
It came emailed, it was emailed.
Okay.
I shared it with, ICC'd Ellen on it, with the rest of the board when I circulated it, because, uh, I thought she could have comments to help clarify anything on it. She, uh, circulated it with, you know, on her side with the select board, so, uh, by the time we were doing our discussion, it came back to me that it had already been shared with them, so, um.
The intent, yeah, so the intent was that we would have maybe a special meeting before the select board met.
Gotcha.
And we could vote on that, letter being submitted.
Yeah.
But it leaked out.
Gotcha.
Yes, it was not done intentionally, and I think that's the reason why they didn't read it in, because it was not before them as a letter of the group. Only a few people were talking about the meeting, because we have to be careful about back and forths.
Right.
For open meeting law.
Right.
I can circulate something, but if people start, you know, having conversations back and forth, now you're, because there's a quorum, when you want an email thread, you have to be careful. So, it was mostly just Dirk and I, and, and Alana talking about the meeting, so.
Does that answer your question? Good point.
I was hoping that we would have a chance to discuss it, and that's why I put, "From the planning board." It makes sense, it makes sense. Yeah, I just was wondering.
And, and you did bring up great points in there, that, you know, and that, they did sit, they came to our previous meeting, and, you know, um, even Kevin said, you know, they, you know, we're supposed to talk about, mention specific here, but the, he's, he even said at one meeting, so it was vetted at one of the meetings, and I'm like, well, I don't know that we agreed to anything, we talked about how wide the road should be, but you brought up some additional points about shoulders and drainage, and that's, that all made sense, and I drove up and down the road, and, I mean, I think about my road, it's windy, and there's trees that have cars crashed into them, and big chunks taken out, and the beginning of that road is a big, it's really narrow and windy.
Um, so, for future, um, things like that, I don't have a problem with Glenn asking me to circulate something to the board, um, if you are the draft, the person that drafts the letter, um, you can watermark it with the word "draft," it'll appear kind of like on an angle, uh, or just put at the top, just write "drafts" five times, so people, it's very clear that this is a draft, it is not approved. So, that's one thing, two, um, this put me a little bit of an awkward position about having to try to create a new meeting, I don't create meetings, that's, you know, that's the chair's role, Alana and I are sort of like your, your, you know, your assistants to make that happen, if that's the will of the chair and the board, so, um, uh, you know, I, like I said, I don't mind taking in a document and then circulating it around, and then taking in comments, so as to not run afoul of, like, an open meeting thing, um, and then bringing them back to the original author, you know, kind of being that go-between to keep everybody, uh, clear, um, but in the future, we just need to think about, like, how we might want to, uh, talk about a meeting like that. I mean, this might have been the first time this has asked, been asked to me in three and a half years, so maybe, I'm gonna have to deal with this again for another three and a half years, but just sort of putting it out there, you know?
Yeah. Okay, uh, I'll skip you, you already went, um, I just have a master plan update, we met last week, and we, uh, had a couple of, of great hours talking about, um, all of the sections that would go into a master plan, and we, uh, the subcommittee divided into groups based on specific chapters that they were interested in. So we now have kind of working, specific working groups for each chapter, and we'll next meet in, uh, the last week, last Tuesday of the month. Again, and it's a public meeting if anybody wants to come.
So do you, is the plan to meet at each meeting and then break into your groups, or are they gonna meet separately, or?
The, the plan is, is that, since we're trying to meet every month, that by the time we get to the next meeting, those sub, subcommittees will have met and discussed updates and things that they need for that specific chapter, and then come to the, uh, the whole group together and share what is needed, or what was learned, or what next steps would be for that specific chapter.
So if somebody wanted to jump in on a certain group, are they posted?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, so the groups, groups with specific people are, are posted, it's posted on the agenda, and if, you know, that doesn't mean that one member can't go talk to another member about that chapter, or it's.
Or, right, or if some public was interested in just one piece.
Yes.
They could go and say, oh, I'd like, I'm interested in the, well, housing, for instance, but, because that's the main focus, but.
Yep.
Um. But if it was just some other one, or?
There's like ten chapters, and we just thought that, to ten of us to go through ten chapters, then we'd break it down and try to get a few people more focused and zoomed in on, um, and then bring that, you know, that.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense, and that's why I'm kind of like.
Write on more than we could chew on.
Encouraging, maybe if there's people that are interested in certain pieces, that they can focus on just that, or have a means to focus on just that.
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll add to that, that the, the people on TV land, that there's a survey posted online that you could take with Survey Monkey, um, and, um, it's, uh, ten questions, and there's some narrative in there, and, uh, the more input we get, the better, so please, um, go on there and do your surveys.
Is that posted to the town website?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I, I did go to, um, the, um, meeting, the, the revolution one, which was pretty cool.
Yeah.
And, um, and got a few extra people to, um, passed out some flyers and all that, um, I was intending to do that at the, um, at the PLIA meeting, but I'm gonna be somewhere far away, so, um, hopefully, somebody, um, from that group can, um, um, you know, Steve Soref is on the, um, in there, but, you know, there's, there's usually, at the PLIA meetings at the lake, there's usually about ten different tables with different topics, so it would be easy to set up a little table with the, uh, master plan, Drew made up a little flyer, you could just scan it with your phone to get the, the survey right on your phone, so it was pretty easy. I handed out a couple of, um, I printed up a bunch of, um, brochures with the scan and the, um, the link on the, uh, website, so, um, if people didn't have their phone, or they, they couldn't scan it, or something happened, they, they could simply take the sheet, so we should probably do that again, get some interaction.
Okay. Glenn, you have anything?
I've got nothing.
Adam?
I was curious about the CIP, I know I volunteered to, uh, be part of that, when is, how does a meeting, I mean?
We, so.
Sorry, I've not said anything while.
No, 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 we have, we have not scheduled a meeting.
You will be called.
So you will be called upon.
Alright, just making sure I'm not missing anything, yeah.
Yeah, you haven't missed it yet, we, we were gonna have a meeting, then we delayed to make sure that we had appropriate, um, people from different things, so.
Alright, good.
Al, I, we talked about at our last, yeah, so two Mondays ago, select board meeting, that, uh, we need to get that scheduled.
Great, okay.
The address of the training, are you guys still going?
Friday the third, June fourteenth?
Yeah.
Yep, I'm, uh, I'm signed up.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I signed up for that. But, I mean, I never got a response, I signed up twice. No, did you get a response back from them?
I did.
What is the address of it, though?
I don't know, I followed the link in there, and it just says, "Fill out this form," I filled out the form, so I'm just gonna do, show up, fill it out twice, so.
Where are you showing up, though? What's the address of the, what, the class, I don't see that.
Do you know if we're in?
Which one?
This right here. This is from you, actually, you're running, I think.
Oh, yeah, this is the one I'm running, I was just gonna talk about that, but.
So you're running that?
Yes.
Alright, I, I signed up twice.
That's fine, yeah.
I, I, hopefully, that, I didn't get a response back, so.
Hey, buddy, carpool?
I'm just, I'm just gonna wait out from my house and see when you drive by and follow, I guess. Missed your location.
Do you know where it is?
Did you just ask?
It was like in.
Oh, it's at the, right?
Hmm?
I thought you followed up with all the people.
I thought you followed up with all the people that signed up and gave you details. That was what was supposed to happen.
I, I believe I got it.
So wasn't it, wasn't the address in there or something? I don't know. I can't find.
Where you're supposed to go. It's one fifty Wakefield Street, which is basically the high school. There's a building next to the high school. It's like the DPW building and a bunch of other, you know, organizations.
What time? I better write this down, because I never got an invite.
Nine thirty to eleven.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, nine.
Nine to eleven?
Nine to eleven on Friday the thirteenth.
Yes.
At what number, Wakefield?
One fifty.
One fifty Wakefield Street?
Yeah, but I will make sure that she.
And that's the high school?
It's next to the high school. It's the DPW building, and then on the other side of it, the backside of it, there's like a bunch of offices for different, different nonprofit organizations and other city, city departments. Like the clerk is now there.
I have Google, so.
Yeah. Yeah, just do one, they're way close, and it's Suite Twelve. Just drive around in circles till you see it.
That's what I did when I went to that other thing in Dover.
It's right behind the Spalding. Like, if you go in Chesna Hill Road off of Wakefield Street, it's the first driveway on the left. So, yeah, that's, that's, you know, very proof for the community facilities chapter.
Yeah.
That's like in two days.
Yeah.
Yep.
Better tell Alexa to remind me.
I'll be bringing the gas-fired, gas-fueled car. I got a comment back from Gene, can't make it, but nice, nice comment.
Blair, anything else besides that one?
Uh, so, yeah, there's that training on Friday. Tomorrow at lunchtime, the Office of Planning and Development is, New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development is doing their monthly webinar, twelve to one, the planning lunches at noon series. And tomorrow is about next steps after plan approval. So this is actually something that Alana and Dale and I have tried to work on a little bit. And after this board approves a subdivision that involves a new road, you know, what are the steps, right? Because between, well, bonding's not as much of an issue now, because they really don't need to put one up. But things like doing inspections, getting a contract with CMA to do inspections of the road, what approvals need to be obtained, when can they start doing things? So it's a process. There's a lot to do that happens once things leave here. And some of it involves a board. It's a lot of the stuff with the staff. But, yeah, that's, that's tomorrow, if that's something you're interested in. And then the other thing is that Tuesday next week, for another project that SRPC is a part of, we're doing a panel discussion. And the topic is homes and habitats. You know, how can we balance housing development with natural resource protection? So a lot of times you see these two things in conflict. There's a rub there. You know, what can we do? Is it possible? And, and what does that look like? So we have Abigail Lyon from, from Prep, from the Pascatac-, Pascatacla Region Estrellas Partnership. We have Emmy Hamm from the Sea Coast Workforce Housing Commission. And then we have Kyle Penetal, who's our Assistant Director at SRPC. And we're, I'll be moderating it. We're going to be asking him some questions about housing development and natural resource protection. So it's, it's a good discussion. It's a relevant discussion for this town in particular, who's going through the process of doing a housing master plan chapter. And, you know, you still have a lot of open space left.
Virtual, too? I'll be at it.
Yes, that one is.
Can you send me a link?
Yep.
I'll take a look.
The first email for that went out today. You might have been on it. But, yeah, I'll make sure that I forward it along to everybody. So that'll be a webinar. That's going to be Tuesday evening, or late afternoon, four to six, four to five. And, you know, then there's going to be opportunity for questions and answers at the end. So, yeah, I'll get that out to you. And if you want to share it with people, please do. You know, we'd love to see a good attendance on that one.
Hopefully you could send that off to our, the master plan committee.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we just finalized it today. Got the first email out. I haven't even had a chance to breathe. So I will look at that tomorrow. And so that's it. It was just those three things. It's the one on Friday that you guys were talking about, and sounds like some of you have signed up for, about reviewing community facilities. Tomorrow during lunch, the OPD webinar on next steps after plan approval. And then Tuesday next week, a panel of experts talking about housing development and natural resource protection. So that's, that's it.
Alana? Do you have something you want to share?
I, I sent an email. I think most people saw that I did give my notice for this land use clerk position. And my last day will be July ninth. So hopefully Ellen will be able to find somebody pretty quickly, then I can help train and get ready. And I was going to comment on, you mentioned, like, I don't know if you mentioned the short notice of kind of the emails that were going back and forth about that letter. That was, I guess, I don't know if the new land use clerk is going to have a different schedule than me. I'm hoping that they do actually, so that they can be there Monday, Wednesday, and Friday instead of just two days a week. But if it's not, just be aware when, when the land use clerk isn't in the office. And those are days that I wouldn't have been able to do anything during that time. So it's just short notice. But, but it's been, it's been great. It's been interesting. I learned so much. There's so much to the land use planning board, the zoning board. So it's been awesome. But just moving on a little bit, so.
Thank you very much for your work so far.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Awesome.
That's it.
Not easy.
I just wanted to.
Too late. You already had your.
I know. It's kind of, do we double circle? HB five seventy-seven is the ADU bill. Eventually, like in the fall, we start talking about zoning changes, and then it has to go to public hearing, and then it goes to the town warrant for vote. So there's a schedule for all that stuff. Last year, we made a couple changes, and it's like we didn't have enough time. So, you know, if we wanted to start talking about any changes earlier this year, for, you know, like that one, it's going to be on the books on July. So we know we have to do something for, get it on the board and article for next year, or we're just going to sit here and take whatever the rules are that they have, and that's, that's it. But obviously, there's some adaptations that we might talk about or make or something like that. So maybe we should all look at HB five seventy-seven and talk about that. Maybe we should go on an agenda at some point. If we have a light agenda or something like that, we can talk about that or other changes that are coming down the pipeline. Just thinking aloud.
Yeah, the legislative session ends this month, so we should know what other housing bills may come forward, and any other things that's not housing-related but zoning-related still. We should have a good sense of it. Obviously, everything still depends on the governor signing things. So just because you might see it in this format, it still needs to be signed, and that meter power still always exists. But, yeah, last year we started around July or August, and we did a lot of conversation. We talked about the detached ADU for quite a while, and that just ended up like getting pushed forward, but a lot of other things did, because we started early. And in the last meeting, we talked about it. I've been trying to update my list to then get it up to all of you. So I will do that. It's still on the horizon. Probably going to be a more July-August thing. But if we get going, then we should be in a good position for, you know, the fall, for when we can start having our hearings.
All right. Well, moving on to other business or public comment. I guess we kind of covered other business. Public comment, this is the time where public can come in and talk to the board. We'd be happy to listen to you. There's no public here right now, so come next time.
Send, send a letter also.
Send a letter, yep. You can email, send a letter, any concerns or questions you might have. We'll respond. All right, I take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Any?
Second.
Let's go.